Well, good morning Bat friends. If we can get Stacy Batwoman to sit down. I'll welcome everybody. Thank you for being here. This is Spirit Week at Human Resources and Tara Palmer and her group kind of lead us in. And this happens to be superhero day. I could not find a Chuck Hart mask, so I decided to wear this one.
It's too scary.
At this time, I will call the Polley County Board of Commissioners work session for October 27th, 2020 to order. And Brian, if you'd bring forward the list of people wishing to speak. Thank you. Tara, I just recognize you for leading the week of Spirit Week. So this is the lady who does it. I would like to thank everyone for being here. And I don't see any elected officials in our group this morning. So I'm extremely pleased to have...I miss somebody? Oh, a future elected official for Mr. Keith Dunn. Thank you for being here Keith. And I'm very excited and grateful to have one of my favorite people in the world, Pastor Johnny Nix at Pickett's Mill Baptist Church, who recognized the law enforcement personnel at his service just two days ago. It was a great service and every service I've ever been to there is great. So Pastor Johnny, if you'd come bring us our invocation and then lead us in the pledge of the flag, we'd appreciate it. Stand if you're able.
Let's bow for prayer. Father, we thank you this morning for your great privilege you've given us to live in this world and to breathe free air and to be Americans. Dear Father, we thank you for this county. Thank you for those who serve our county, the public servants who make up this county and make many sacrifices to give us a safe and wonderful community. Your Father, we pray that we'd lead with integrity today. And Lord, we pray that we'd make wise decisions before you and before others. Watch over us, protect our county, our officers, our first responders, all of those who are out there to help us and assist us in our daily lives. We pray, dear Father, that you would watch over them and protect them. Guide our families, guide us as individuals. We pray it in Jesus' name. Amen. If you'll direct your attention to the flag, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much Pastor Nix. The minutes of the October 13th, 2020 work session and the October 13th board meeting minutes are available for review. Under our positively Paulding segment, we have one of the recognitions of the Employee of the Month. This is the one we had technical difficulties on last week, but it's all fixed.
The entire county should be proud to have somebody like Russell. The first few years he was here, he was project manager. And then from then until now, he's been the manager of our wastewater treatment plants and soon to be treatment division manager for the Richland Creek Reservoir Water Treatment Plant. We're proud to have him.
I believe that you are the very first employee of the month that has been in a managerial position. So congratulations.
Russell started stepping up and he's been attending all of our progress meetings for Richland Creek, been at every single equipment testing and startup and is really getting them to a point where they're able to start functioning.
I'm very proud to work here. I've put a lot of time and effort into doing what I think is going to make the county a better place for years to come. And we just couldn't do any of it without having a great team behind me. Appreciate the team I work with.
Thank you, team and Russell. We have no invited guests this morning. Under bid awards, award the purchase of a roller to Yancey Brothers in the amount of And Ms. Tabitha Pollard's going to clue us in on this one.
Good morning. This again is a budgeted purchase. So we had budgeted about $65,000 in the budget process this year, and this is actual purchase of that roller and is being purchased off of state contract. So just for those listening, that's the state issues of procurement for items that other governments need. One vendor's awarded that contract. And then when we looked that item up, the bidding's already been done and we're able to piggyback off of that bidding.
Any questions for Tabitha? Okay, we're going to move on with Ms. Tabitha Pollard on a few more items. Number three is to award the fiscal year 2020 detention pond mowing and maintenance project. That's project number PRPOND 2020 to the low bidder Triscapes in the amount of $53,750.
I'm only going to start this one. This is a stormwater project. We had five participants and those bids ranged from $53,750 up to $322,192. And DOT has, they've determined that their, the low bid is good bid. So unless you have any questions of George?
Any questions? Good backup material as always. So we'll move on to number four, which is to award the Dallas-Aquithrough Highway at Fry Road and Mount Tabor Church Road, project number PRIMP CR 7106532 to the low bidder Bartow Paving in the amount of $2,951,575.76. SPOS funds will be used for the project.
Again, we issued the bid. We received five participants and those bids ranged from $2,951,575.76 up to $3,514,825. And George, I'll give you more specifics of that project.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This project is located in post one and post four. We've been working on this for quite a while. As anybody who knows who's been through the area, there's some current operational issues with that intersection, specifically the available side distance. You're going over the top of a crest, vertical hill, and the side streets are doglegged, offset from each other. Kind of creates some weaving movement, especially people from turning from Mount Tabor onto Dallas-Aquithrough and then Fry and vice versa. This project will reduce the vertical curvature, cut it down by up to six feet to meet a speed limit, a design speed of at least 45 miles an hour through this point. We're going to realign those offset intersections so they intersect at Dallas-Aquithrough at each other. There's going to be left and right turn lanes on Dallas-Aquithrough Highway, both directions, along with an exclusive right turn lane on Fry and Mount Tabor. This has an 18-month construction time. The low bid is 9.8% above the engineer's estimate. Most of that difference was in the grading complete item, which we typically see. However, we believe this, you know, is still an acceptable bid and we recommend going forward at this time. And again, this project will, the funds will be allocated from the SPOS program.
George, what was the reason why it went 10% over?
Most of it was in the grading complete. That's a kind of a gray area where it includes a lot of different things that can, you know, do hauling, grading, construction of shoulders, removal of dirt, excavation, you know, concrete. So it's just kind of a catch-all item. So it's, it's, it's one of the harder ones to actually estimate, but that's where roughly $300,000 difference was in that one item itself.
Do you see any of the contractors that have workforce issues?
No, this right here, this was Bartow Paving and they've done a really good job for us in the past. They did the work out here on Justice Center Drive and they worked well with us because we actually delayed that project so the water line work could be done out there. And they didn't actually charge us any extra or make any modifications of the contract. They did our asphalt paving contract for subdivisions on the south part of the county this year. They did, last year, they did the, also another subdivision contract. They've done work at, for us on East Paulding at 120. We've had really good luck with them in the past.
George, what's the start date?
We're going to have to do, you know, get this approved, get the contract documents signed, go forward with the NTP. We're probably talking sometime around the start of, you know, early January. So, and again, it's 18 months once the notice to proceed is, is signed to construction completion.
That's going to be a great project.
George, I just say thanks to you and your team for getting this to this point. I won't be here in 18 months when this is complete, but I will thoroughly enjoy that, not dealing with that traffic situation on that road. Heard a lot about that one and, you know, the pain points, I know there are certain pain points you hear a lot about and that's been one of them. So looking forward to having that done.
Yeah, I agree Commissioner. This is a, Dallas-Aquithrough is the second busiest county roadway other than Bill Carruth. And with all the traffic that goes there and also the continued growth we're going to see, this is, we believe this is a, it's a very needed project. It's been in the pipeline for design awhile. It's a little more complex than others just because of the staging we're going to have to go through there. We just can't shut down Dallas-Aquithrough Highway, obviously. It'd be nice if we could, but obviously we can't. So it's, it adds to the complexity.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number five is award the courthouse low voltage cable replacement project to the low bidder Net Planner in the amount of $79,874.50.
Over the past few months, we have awarded some new cameras, some new security features as well as AVI equipment in the courthouse. The cabling that's there is analog cabling and so we have some compatibility issues. We need to go in and change that cabling. So we did, completed specifications, received bids. We only received one bid. It was from Net Planner and they did some work at the Adult Detention Center a few months ago to make sure it was comparable. We had another bid, but they weren't, they did not meet all the specifications in that project and they were just under and still had some items to add. As well as, we received a quote from another vendor. Apparently this is a very busy industry right now and not everybody's got time. So from one that didn't have time and it was just in excess of 80,000. So to make sure it was, it was a competitive price. So we're recommending award to Net Planner in the amount of $79,874.50.
Similar to Brian's question before, when would they get started on it?
I think they need to start immediately. Frank can give you more of an insight as to the specifics, but the AVI equipment's in place. I think they need the cabling to make it function as, as it should efficiently.
Ms. Chairman, that's correct. They need to get started on this as soon as possible. It's all integrated together, but this is the time to do it. With the old cabling, it just makes, makes perfect sense to upgrade the cabling so you can get the maximum out of the equipment.
Thank you very much. We have no reports from committees and departments this morning. We have one person who signed up for public participation on agenda item number 11, which is Resolution 20-39 about the Smith Road. So at this time, Roger, Mr. Smith, would you come forward and sign in if there is a sign-in sheet?
I'm good, I'm good right now, sir.
Oh, you're good?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here. Under the consent agenda, we have to consider these items if we want to move them or not. Number six is adopt community development job classification for stormwater engineer. Number seven is declare the following item listed as surplus and approve the disposal through auction or trade. And I'm just going to point your attention, if you want to know what these two items are, there's a listing on the back table. And number eight is authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with Greystone Power Corporation Utility, a utility easement to service the Bennett Road Lift Station. And number nine is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement for Greystone Power Corporation Utility Easement to service Fire Station Number 12, the new fire station on Wayside Lane. Would any of the commissioners like to place any of these items on regular business? Hearing none, we will leave them as consent agenda items, all five or all four, and move on to old business. Number 10 is discuss action to adopt Resolution 20-38 ratifying the settlement agreement in the case of Anthony A. Cooper Jr. versus Paulding County, Georgia. It was tabled from the October 13th, 2020 board meeting and our county attorney, Mr. Phillips, is ready and available for our briefing.
Commissioners, just to, just to rehash this item, this is a settlement agreement that was informally approved back in October of 2018, but never was actually placed on the full agenda for your approval. Substantial components of the settlement agreement involved a payment to Mr. Cooper, which I detailed exactly during, at the last meeting, some grading work on the property due to a sewage spill, some work on the manholes for pressure release for items going through the system there, and the proposal to at least consider abandoning portions of Smith Road. And if Smith Road ultimately is not abandoned, it is an agreement to refrain from increasing or improving the creek crossing until Mr. Cooper should pass away. But those are the substantial terms of the settlement agreement that's up for your approval.
Any additional questions or concerns, Jason? Number 10 is related, I'm sorry, number 11 is related and it is about discussing action to adopt Resolution 20-39, abandoning a portion of the county road known as Smith Road, AKA County Road 286. Also tabled from the October 13th, 2020 board meeting and Mr. Phillips and Mr. Jones are available for briefing.
Commissioners, at the last meeting, we did have a public hearing where members of the public spoke about their respective positions on whether or not they believed that Smith Road, or at least a portion of it, from about the creek northward should be abandoned. At the regular session, I believe, two gentlemen also came and spoke and continued to provide their opinions and their input on the merits or to continue Smith Road unabandoned. Obviously, there are different members of the public that have differences of opinion on whether or not an abandonment should occur or not. This matter is on the agenda pursuant to the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement says that you will have an abandonment hearing, but whether or not you choose to abandon the road is entirely up to the discretion of the Board of Commissioners as to whether or not the road continues to serve a substantial public purpose or it's no longer in the public interest to allow the road to continue to be open.
Other questions or any questions? All right, thank you, Jason. We'll move on to new business, which number 12 is discuss action to amend asphalt contract one with Bartow Paving to add asphalt paving for 10 streets in the Georgian subdivision that's located in post two. Mr. Jones to report.
On March 10th, 2020, Paulding County awarded a construction contract to Bartow Paving for patching, milling, leveling and widening and plant mix resurfacing on 83 streets and 15 subdivisions in the south part of the county in the amount of $2,388,000. This project is complete with $197,000 left in the contract. After this contract was awarded, we initiated efforts to repair and pave top coat asphalt on certain units of the Georgian subdivision. The units that we're looking at doing this asphalt work are more than 75% built out and have project improvement fees collected for the purpose of completing the infrastructure work for the subdivisions, streets and right-of-way. We contacted Bartow Paving asking if they would be interested in doing this work in the Georgian under the terms of this contract that was awarded back in March. And they agreed to do that work under those unit prices. With Bartow performing the work, we'll receive favorable pricing just because of the contract, because it was so large, the quantities, you get better pricing versus a small contract with smaller quantities. Also too, they will be able to perform this work faster than if we actually had to bid this out, advertise, et cetera, et cetera, go before the board for approval. The required estimated funds needed to perform this work is about $135,000, give or take a little bit. Once we do the work, we'll find out if it's, how close that is, but we're pretty comfortable with that estimate. There are sufficient project improvement fees collected in the Georgian to do this work at this time. Again, most of the work is top coat asphalt with some base repairs, but the majority is just top coat asphalt. Basically finish up those streets. This units A, C and W, roughly 5,500 linear feet of street work. And I can answer hopefully any questions if you may have any.
Any questions? We'll move on to 13, which is similar, discuss action to amend asphalt contract two with CW Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated to add asphalt paving for six streets in the Stonewood Creek subdivision located in post four. And Mr. Jones is going to continue to brief.
On March 10th, 2020, the county awarded a construction contract to CW Matthews for patching, milling, leveling, widening and plant mix resurfacing on 75 streets and 11 subdivisions in the north part of the county in the amount of $2,600,000. That work is also complete and there's approximately $146,000 left in the contract. Again, after this work was initiated, basically we noticed that Stonewood Creek was built out more than 75% and we could begin to repair areas that need to be repaired and also complete the top coat paving. This is slightly different than the PIF. The county had purchased about 63 acres in the amount of $500,000 to, adjacent to Stonewood Creek Phase One, to build and construct part of the Seven Hills Connector roadway project. As part of that roadway project, approximately 5.74 acres of property were used for roadway and right-of-way. After that project was complete, we were able to sell 39.32 acres of property of that project in January of 2017 for $2.45 million. So made a nice profit on it, obviously. And as part of the sales of that property, we were required to complete the streets. So what we're asking to do is to take the proceeds from that sale and put it towards the finishing of the streets so they can be fully completed. Again, we contacted Matthews and they asked, and we asked them if they would be willing to perform this work under the terms of the contract they did agree to. Again, similar to what we just discussed, we get favorable pricing due to the larger quantities and just can be able to complete this work on a faster timetable. It's six streets in this contract, it's about 4,500 linear feet. It's a little bit more because of the base is not in as good shape as the Georgian, so we're going to have to do more base repairs. So it's, it's more of a cost on this particular one. But that's pretty much the backup for that. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
What's the origin of the 75% rule?
It's from the development regulations. It basically says that you pave top coat once 75% of the homes are constructed. The idea is if you do it beforehand with construction traffic, framing packages, equipment, it'll really beat up the asphalt. So you try to put down asphalt once the majority of the heavy trucks. You can drive a car on asphalt all day long, many cars, heavy trucks just beat it up and reduce the lifespan. I can go into talking about equivalent single axle loads and e-sols and all that theory, but I don't want to bore you.
Thanks.
Of course, George, don't give big trucks a bad name because they do pay a lot more taxes than that little car.
They serve a purpose. You can haul a lot more framing packages on a truck, big truck than you can a Volkswagen Jetta, for sure. There's no doubt about it. Everything has a, has a function, I agree.
Okay, number 14 is discuss action to approve a project funding allotment increase in the amount of $165,000 for the completion of the 2020 asphalt contract three with CW Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated.
Okay. On April 21st, 2020, the county awarded a construction contract for CW Matthews for patching, leveling, milling, widening and plant mix resurfacing on 13.73 miles of county through roads. The contracted amount for that work was $3.238 million. That work is essentially complete. Additional quantities that were needed for this project, essentially, we added on a section of Dallas-Niebo Road where it meets Niebo Road, about 2,400 feet north and south of Niebo, we added onto this contract. It needed to be paved. It was, we had significant amount of work orders in the past and it just made sense to do that work while we were out there. And also, we had additional roadway whis on Niebo and Mount Moriah where we were just, we didn't estimate quite enough to finish that work as the road varies. Unfortunately, a road doesn't just stay 22 feet or 24 feet the whole way through. It would make things very easy for estimating purposes, but it varies slightly. So at this time, we need approximately $165,000 to complete this contract and that supplemental amount is approximately 5% of the contract total. So we're recommending the board approving the request for $165,000.
All three of these, 12, 13, 14, were funded through SPOS?
It was a varying funds. There was SPOS funds, there were general funds, we received an L-MIC grant. So all those three types of funding were used for this project, for these projects.
Other questions? Number 15 is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement with the Atlanta Regional Commission to secure funding for the comprehensive transportation plan update in the amount of $625,000 with the county providing $125,000 in match funds. SPOS funds will be used for this project.
Okay. You may recall back in February of this year, David Haynes from the Atlanta Regional Commission came before the Board of Commissioners and provided a presentation regarding the comprehensive transportation plan, CTP, update. The ARC is administering state and federal funds for the purpose of the CTP program and has provided it to the counties and applicable cities for use. We're required to prepare short-range, mid-range and long-range plans, planning for roads and transportation and whether the funding from the ARC is available or not. So we would have to, we would have to provide a plan. G.DOT, federal government ARC, like I said, they require these plans to be made and also approved before the boards, before we can request funding on many of these projects that we have. So they want to make sure that the board approves of it, the government, and also that it's, you know, the public has seen it. It's beneficial to take advantage of this agreement offered by the ARC as it will provide the bulk of the funding, 80% for the CTP plan, whereas the county, and the county has to provide a 20% match. So the ARC grant amount will be $500,000 and the county contribution will be $125,000. The information used will be used to develop the straight state transportation improvement program, the TIP, and the regional transportation plan, the RTP, and establish funding for the same. The funding match from the county, we recommend to come from the SPOS program. And this agreement is simply just basically allocating the funds. We will come later on before the board for the CTP update itself and basically the, what is going to consist of, what we're going to look at, how it's going to be, I guess I'd say the facets of, of the update itself, but this is just simply to accept the funding from the Atlanta Regional Commission.
Any questions?
When's the last time we've done this?
This is 2015. We do these every five to six years.
Number 16, Discuss Action to Approve a Five-Year, thank you, George, Discuss Action to Approve a Five-Year Joint Funding Agreement for Water Resource Investigations with the U.S. Geological Survey for Monitoring Flow and Water Quality in the Richland Creek in the Total Amount of $307,650. Ms. Ashmore to report.
I told our advisory board last week, it hardly seems possible that we've been monitoring water quality in Richland Creek with USGS for five years. But Paulding County had implemented a joint funding agreement with USGS back in 2015, and that was, the decision was made to utilize USGS for this function. They've got a nationwide network of monitoring stations, they're a highly defensible agency in their production of data, and they make it available online, real-time. Our station, anyone can see the quality in Richland Creek and the flow in Richland Creek merely by logging on to the USGS website and looking for the, pulling up the monitor for Richland Creek at Old Dallas Road near Dallas, Georgia. And so we have, we are bringing you this, basically renewal, new agreement with them. The initial five-year agreement included the construction of the site and the operation and maintenance with that data. To comply with the requirements of our permits and the requirements of our biological opinion, we have this data plus nitrates monitored quarterly. And we're recommending that we continue to utilize USGS to comply with these monitoring requirements. You'll see that it is a total for the five years of $307,650, ranging from $59,200 to $62,850 on an annual basis, and this is a fully inclusive cost. If you have any questions?
Do they get involved in paying or compensating our employees who do the testing?
No, actually, they do, the nitrate, the continuous monitoring, they do all of that testing. There's some coordination in getting them access, but this sampling itself is not done by our staff, it's done solely by USGS.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Ashmore. That is the conclusion of regular business at 10:33. And we do have a need for executive session, but before I call for that motion, I'd like to move on down to the end of the agenda, which there's no one who's signed up for public participation on non-agenda items today. And I'm going to ask for a late announcement here, and Rebecca, I guess I'm putting you on the spot, but a census is about three, right? Is there still any time for people?
Yes, sir. The census is done. They, actually, the last day is October 31, I believe, is for the last day of the census to get on there and participate in the survey. Paulding County has done very well. There's still time for citizens to do that, but so far, we're pretty close and actually have exceeded the 2010 census count. So our count and citizen participation has really, we've really done well this year, especially with the COVID. There was a lot of events that we had to cancel due to COVID. I think that we could have gotten the word out a little bit more, but we did some internal events with some of our employees and staff, our tax assessor's office, our tax commissioner's office, they helped us try to get the word out by wearing our census shirts to let the citizens that come in know about it. We continually put information on our website and also on our social media sites just to make sure that the citizens were aware of it. We did have a census representative coming into the building, answering questions for our citizens. So we've really tried to step up and get the word out about the extended time that citizens were given to respond.
So really, you have three days left. Somebody's watching this on Channel 23, or is in the audience, hasn't?
I believe you have three days left, yeah.
Ends on Halloween Day. All right, so another, at the end, we normally do comments from Commissioners. I'm going to ask for our county administrator first, Frank Baker, to comment on an issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those of you who don't know, this week, October 23 through 31, is National Red Ribbon Week. And for those of you who want a little background on that, it's a national campaign that was started in the memory of a DEA agent, Kiki Camerana, who was killed in 1985 in Mexico. And in 1988, they started this campaign. And the red ribbon really serves as a catalyst to mobilize communities, to educate youth, and encourage participation in drug prevention activities. And it's always been something I've been really interested in, obviously with our ADAD program. So we wanted to point that out. But tonight and Thursday night, the second and third floor of this building will be lit up with red candles. And so if anybody has an opportunity to come out and see that, it'd be really kind of cool. We're really looking forward to it. And I've got to send a shout-out to our Deputy 911 Director, Christina Kelly, who's also on the Board of Directors of the Drug-Free Paulding. She'd contacted me a few weeks ago, and she said, "I've got this great idea. I know you're going to like it." And I loved it from the beginning. But she came up and showed us the candles, I guess it was last week. They're really cool, and Rebecca's office has taken that initiative. So we've got that going on tonight. So if you're leaving the building tonight, or you're passing by tonight or Thursday night, we'd love for you to take a look. There is one other additional item. Due to COVID-19, we are trying to get a presentation done for our Rides for Wishes, and we were very successful this year. Maybe I'll have a total for the board tonight, at tonight's meeting. But we're planning on a little presentation with a check and that sort of thing. That's the employees give back to the community that we did a few weeks ago, so we're really pleased with that. It busted our expectation this year, especially with COVID, and we had the weather to contend with, too. So we had all the odds against us this year, but we managed to pull it out. So I appreciate the opportunity to tell everybody about it.
Thank you for leadership in that, Frank. Well, before we go down the line here with Commissioners' comments or announcements, just like I say, Stacy, we're very glad to have you, our Chamber of Commerce Director is here, and we're all trying to work our boards together, aren't we? And I think it's making us stronger in Paulding County. So who wants to start?
Someone sent me something to read with Veterans Day coming up. The town of Wyntot and Burnt Hickory Community will be displaying the crosses of all the Paulding County fallen soldiers for Veterans Day this year. The crosses will be displayed on Tuesday, November 10, and Wednesday, November 11, Veterans Day, from 9:00 a.m. until dusk. The display will be located at 586 Benson Road, the entrance to the town of Wyntot. Everyone is invited to come by and pay your respect to these fallen soldiers. Please tell your friends and your neighbors. End of quote at the end. "Our flag does not fly because the wind moves it; it flies with the last breath of each soldier who died protecting it."
Brian, when was that?
November 10, 11.
It's hard to follow that. I wanted to thank the guys that worked feverishly to get this Channel 23 back up. You don't think that people watched that? You let it go down for a few weeks. My phone was ringing. So, and then when it did come up, I think there was some other difficulties they had to work through, and I'm just glad that they got it back up and going, and I appreciate Mr. Harkin and his staff just for the things that they do and working with our local provider to make sure that happened. Thanks.
My comment this morning would be attention to the SPOST. You know, George briefed four different transportation issues where SPOST money is involved, and the number of streets, you know, many, many streets, I'll say, and many, many miles of roadway will be paved because of the public voting for SPOST, and I'd just like to draw attention to that.
I will be speaking tomorrow. Thank you to the Paulding Chamber for asking me. It will be Sandy's story. It's my story going through breast cancer. I'm doing it because I want to help other women, or it doesn't really matter, people going through cancer. Everybody goes through something different, nobody's story is the same. So I just want to tell mine in hopes that it helps somebody else. Tomorrow at the airport at 12 o'clock.
It would save the best for last.
I thought it was me. Dave, I have to tell you, I am extremely disappointed that you didn't wear that Batman mask the entire meeting. I can't even, I'm struggling for words to, yeah, there you go. I was heading down Highway 61 the other day, and I saw a disabled vehicle, and there was some blue lights going on, and I figured there was an accident, and slowed down as I was coming up on it. And it was just a disabled vehicle, there was no accident, but there were a couple of police officers, a young man and a young lady, who were there on the scene, and I thought, as I came up and saw it, I thought, oh, they're just getting people around this car, which I think would have been the appropriate thing to do. But they were actually pushing the disabled vehicle off of the road onto a side street so that traffic could flow, could return to normal. And I wish Gary were here, because he usually is. I was going to say something to him. But I really appreciate the servant's heart that many women in law enforcement and public service do. They could have stood there and helped traffic get around safely and slowed it down for a little bit, but instead, they kind of took the initiative to help get it off the road, which would have helped the tow truck, I would imagine, and helped traffic move quicker and better, and I thought that was really neat. So Gary, wherever you are, I appreciate your folks.
All right, good words. Thanks, everyone, and thank you all for being here again. I will call for a motion to adjourn for the purpose, adjourn to executive session for the purpose of real estate.
I'll make that motion, Dave.
Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
I have a second.
Second, by Commissioner Stover, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. Stand adjourned.